All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:30. Let's rise for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Can you scroll up the agenda, scroll down the agenda a little bit? I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda or make any changes as needed.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as given.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for the vote, the student advisory vote first.
Aye.
Perfect, board vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any public comments, Jackie? None? Full house, okay. Excellent, so we'll go ahead with our student board member comments. And then, would you like to report out anything this month?
Nothing that I've heard of from the school. I guess the comment that I had is I got yearbook to give band another full spread.
Nice.
So we'll have two full spreads this year for band.
They deserve it. Are kids getting antsy for like the holiday breaks and whatnot?
Yeah, everything's being wrapped up at the end of all of our classes.
Great, thank you. All right, we're at our consent agenda. I hope we've all had a chance to take a look at this. Do you, and I would entertain, no, excuse me, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. The consent agenda as presented.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as stated.
Any discussion? Well, yeah. All right, I will take a vote, our student board member advisory votes.
Aye.
Perfect, board member vote.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, we have a presentation from the high school. Tonight.
Good evening, board. In August, each school had to sign up to come present something to the board about something cool going on at our school. So I signed up for this month. And I wanted to invite a couple of our Avid students that are in our Avid elective class. I wanted them to come talk to the board about what Avid has done for them and what has it done for them as a learner. So this is Francie Wan. And also Emily is gonna talk when she gets here. Talked to her today, she's also a part of that. And I can see Francie has a presentation prepared and I'm gonna turn it over to her. You ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Well, my Avid class has become like a family to me. Has become a safe place for me to ask questions and collaborate. When I first joined Avid, I was very shy. I would dread TRF Thursdays because I would have to talk in front of people and I'm not a very social person. But Avid has taught me to step out of my bubble. Now I can say, don't dread TRFs. Instead, I anticipate it because it's actually extremely helpful. In TRFs, we start with a question and state what we know, then a group helps us understand our point of confusion. Not only has this helped me solve problems, but it has also helped me with my communication and working in a team. Last year, I was starting to fall behind. And my teacher, Ms. Nix, helped me to get back on track. We met up and made a plan for me to get my grades up before the end of trimesters. And speaking of the end of the trimester, it's almost finals week. And finals week can be incredibly stressful, but not with Avid. The support from my teacher and classmates is just overwhelming. And truly, Avid has taught me many things, including my note-taking techniques and my collaboration skills and many more things. And because of this, Avid is a class I always look forward to and will love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Emily, walk the perfect thing.
Bowling match.
First of all.
Yes.
How we do?
We won.
So we were just sharing, Francie was sharing with the board what Avid has done for her and what it's done for her as a learner. And the floor is yours.
I, from my recollection, I was the first Avid class to be in state in the middle school with Ms. Gorilla when I was in seventh grade. And ever since then, my life has never changed. I love my Avid class. It is a family, we help each other. And in middle school, I was like the 2.53 Avid student. But since then, I've grown to be, right now, a 3.99. And I'm just given that Avid produces. It has helped me, the TRFs are tremendously helpful. I have been opened to the opportunities of colleges that I didn't even know existed. Scholarships that I didn't even know were a thing. And it's just given me more opportunities, exposed my vocab to new words for SAT prep and everything that you can really imagine. And luckily, we have four Avid teachers. So if my teacher's not here, I gotta go to a different Avid teacher and see their opinions and their thoughts and what they do for their class. And unfortunately, we lost Beavers last year to Vermont Union. But Ms. Olson was very gracious and took us in instead. And can't ask for a better teacher.
That's very sweet. What did, you both mentioned TRF.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, TRFs are tutorial request forms. So you fill out a form of a question that you have or a struggle that you just can't seem to get past this one point. A lot is math. I do a lot of English, because I do AP English, so thesis, and conclusions and analyzing. So it's just, if you have a question, you fill out the paper. And then, for us, it's every other week. But I know last year, we did it every week. But you just present in front of the class and it's peer tutoring. So your peers are supposed to ask you questions to help you further along, for the you along to get the answer instead of answering.
Oh, that's fascinating.
So it's, you're still thinking for yourself, but they're just giving you help. But sometimes, it does falter when a student is more advanced. Like in a math class, when you're in a general ed class or when someone's in pre-calc, not a lot of people can help them. So the teacher has to jump in.
That's really cool.
The tutorials are extremely powerful. And my vision eventually is to have tutorials happening in most of our classes, not just our Avid elective classes. So that's the direction we're heading towards.
That was my question too. If Avid is an exclusive class, you go to your Avid class.
So Avid, we have Avid electives for each grade level.
Okay.
And those kids fit the Avid criteria to go into those classes. But then, as we work on going, building why there's Avid strategies that we're teaching all of our teachers, we send our other teachers to Avid training. So we have at least two to three members in every department that are Avid trained at this point. So when we walk into a classroom, we should see Avid strategies, essential questions posted on the board so every kid knows what they're doing that period for that lesson. So we should be seeing Avid strategies across the board.
Great.
The tutorials, it's a big step. And we wanna work towards that. My next step is to have some Avid kids come in and model a tutorial at a staff meeting so all our staff can see one.
Nice.
So we haven't done that yet, but we will.
Great.
Appreciate you supporting Avid. Big Avid supporter, wanted to go K-12 eventually.
Me too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Dana helped push me to go the Avid route. And it's been the best thing I've ever seen in education.
Awesome.
Sounds great, thank you. That's great. We're at board development and linkage and the superintendent's update.
If I may interject, we were lucky enough to schedule Fire Chief Bobback to come and talk to the board. But because he also had a board meeting tonight, he's kind of got officially on his calendar so that he could speak when he got here and we can make all of that work. So before we hear from Dan on the budget status report, in respect of both time, I would like to inject him here as part of the agenda, if that's okay with the board.
I think that's appropriate, so under the same umbrella.
Awesome. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, I really appreciate it. And just to give a little pretext to an awesome partnership, and I'm hoping it's coming, I know it's coming, I was not hoping it's coming to go to the school, the fire district. But one of the things that, to tee up the program, we looked at the fire district, or fire authority, I should say, about two years ago, just taking a look at our call volume. We did these deep dives and did all this data analysis and whatnot. To simply put it, what we found is that our call volume at the fire authority was, it got up about 30% in six years, excuse me, five years, so 6% per year. Growing community, aging community and whatnot. And also know that about 80 to 85% of our call volume is emergency medical stuff. Yes, we do firefighting, but it's mostly on the medical side anymore, that's what we do. So what we did though is when we took a look at a little bit deeper dive into that data and that 30% increase over five years, what we found is that there was, as far as life-threatening emergencies where paramedics are doing what they do to save lives, that increase was almost negligible, almost nothing. And what we did is we found that the increase was social and behavioral health. It's psychiatric emergencies that aren't getting attended to. It's the minor medical problems that can't be attended to at the doctor's office and the 911s being utilized for help. At the same time, we're looking at that, we're reading on the front page of the paper, four and six-hour week times at St. Michael Medical Center. It was unheard of two years ago to ever pull into, if you came in with an ambulance, in fact, it was kind of an unwritten rule, like if you go in by ambulance, you'll immediately go into the emergency room. That is off the limits. We were being waited in the parking lot, on the tarmac there, waiting for a nurse to come up and bang on our, it would be two hours before that happened. So there's a misutilization in the emergency room, significant misutilization in the emergency room. But the reason why that's happening is because all of a sudden, you have a medical emergency. It might not even be an emergency, but it's a condition and whatnot. You call your primary care provider and they tell you, well, we'll be able to see you maybe eight to 10 weeks. It doesn't cut it. I'm having an emergency now. And so you wait another day, another two days, you don't know quite what to do, and so you go, gosh, what, I'm utilizing 911. And we want people to use 911. But we're sitting there saying it's driving up our volume significantly. New paramedics, new firefighters, more fire trucks, more ambulances, that's not the right resource for taking place. Because we said, you know, the life-threatening stuff is pretty medical, that's what's happening. So what we ended up doing was looking at a model where we would essentially bring on a physician associate. Physician associate's a provider, just like what you see in the doctor's office. In fact, if you go down to our clinic here in town, you're more than likely, you'll call a doctor, they respond to a doctor, but it's more than likely a physician associate. And they can do anything a doctor could do, but underneath the license of a doctor. So what we wanted to do was essentially take a pretty old model, it's not a new model, but if 40, 50, 60 years ago, you had a little gentleman or lady that was in the community and if you got sick, you called this person, this doctor. They'd come to your house with their satchel and they would work really, really hard to treat you there at the home, try to keep you out of the emergency room. However, if it was such a condition that was, you know, over the top and needed additional help, but waited the emergency room, they would go. We got away from that model a long time ago. When our paramedics get called out and we attend to a patient, we only have two options as to how we go about treating those patients. One is to leave a patient at home, tell them, hey, follow up your primary care provider, we already talked about the issues there. Odds are, they're not going to, we're gonna be back in a couple of days. So that's one option our paramedics and EMTs have. And the second option is to go to the emergency room. And when we do that, we're obligating the patient's starting bill, about $2,500 to $3,000. That's just across the threshold. We haven't done E tests, we haven't done ECT work, we haven't even blood work, we're just crossing the threshold. So if we've got infections that need prescriptions, if we've got pretty minor medical incidents, which we have a lot of, people are utilizing 911 for, obligating them to $2,500 worth of work, a long wait there at the emergency room, doesn't seem like the best care going forward. So we're gonna be bringing on, in partnership with Public Hospital District Number Two, bringing on a PA. And what we want to do is partner with the school district to make the PA services available to all of the students. Connected with Maggie, I've connected with some of the administrators and the rest I'm gonna continue to. But we know that there's a lot of kids that do not have rapid medical care. You know, physician, excuse me, pediatrician's not always available at moments' notice. You know, waiting two to four weeks out if we do have some condition going on with kids. A lot of times affordability is an issue. You know, I called 911 because I don't think it's costing me anything, but I know if I go to my doctor's office, there's gonna be a problem. We do charge for services, it's about the same as an office visit, but I will also preface it with the fact that we do not not see anybody for an deleted pick. We will see everybody because we figure if we do not, somewhere down the stream, it's gonna be a lot more expensive setup when we're sick and not doing as well as we need to be. And the last thing that I'd like to, building off the success of that particular program, oh, and maybe I should talk about how it functions real quickly. If you call 911, you will get a paramedic and EMT. Nobody stands or buts, that paramedic and EMT is coming. But what we're doing there in the, in the person's home is bringing on a third option, which is to pull up on a computer screen our PA's schedule and asking the patient, hey, we don't think you need to go to the emergency room, but we certainly know you need attention. How about we schedule a 15, 20-minute appointment here in your home? I can have my PA here in about maybe an hour or next day. We can do mobile ultrasound, we can do mobile x-ray, we can do suturing, we can do prescriptions, we can do referrals, we can do insurance checks, we can do just about anything you can do in a doctor's office, we can do in your home. And if you don't feel comfortable, because a lot of people don't want a PA coming into their home, come down to the fire station, their new fire station, their new clinical room that we've built out so you can come and take a look there. It's not just for students, it's for anybody in the community. What we're trying to do is, we're really good at trying to get fires, you know, with smoke detectors, preventative measures, or excuse me, preventative measures on the fireside. We're trying to do the same thing on the EMS side. If we can get you a little bit earlier on, we'd much rather do that than see you later when we are in crisis and truly needing our EMTs and paramedics. And then the newest iteration of what we've got, which I think will be even, maybe even more beneficial, they'll jointly be beneficial. The building off the success of the PA program is bringing on, we identified a psychiatric ARMP, so an advanced registered nurse practitioner. Anybody can hear can attribute to the fact that mental health services, she does see kids, by the way, she does see people under 18. That's a specialty as far as being able to have that in the community, but it's a void. Right now, if we have patients that need mental health services, the connection even for our paramedics and EMTs is almost nil. She's with us Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock. We can do a lot of teleconferencing, we do a lot of video medicine in the psychiatric realm as well, so it doesn't have to be there in person. And with both these programs, it's not designed and standard to be long-on-term going care. We don't want our PA to become your primary care provider or a student's primary care provider. Same with our psychiatric ARMP, but in moments of crisis where who do I pick up and call and who can come and give me a hand? We want to have somebody that comes out, that can actually identify and work through the problem. And we wanna be, like I said, a lot more preventive. So our psych ARMP, I think on day three was up here working with a pretty troubling situation up here, heading in the right direction and making that resource available for the community. So please, I know that we have a fire district dividing line that's here, but our PA can see anybody really in the Mason area. So his license allows him to see and same occurs for our psych ARMP, is anybody in the state of Washington. And so please, please, please utilize this program. Our PA is Monday through Thursday and then mornings on Saturday and Sunday. So we have weekend coverage as well. And our goal is to hopefully build this out. We've piloted, we're the first in Washington State to do it. Our goal is to get this across Mason County and to have it stood up in Hootsport, Matlock, so it's around the county. We're all helping one another out, but we're starting right here at North Mason. But hopefully for any staff, students, parents that need these services, I was so happy to see the cards when I came in, please utilize this. We got little Megs, call me personally, we'll get you in touch. It's an awesome program.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, no, I, you've made a convert of my husband, so he's, won't stop talking. I wanted, so this PA, Monday through Thursday, what are the hours?
It's gonna be there 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock.
Oh. And then what, I wanted to know their names so that we can just start.
Sure.
Utilizing their names as we talk.
Kristy Ilers is our psychiatric ARMP.
Ilers?
Ilers.
Okay. And what's the PA's name?
Adam Boyd.
Boyd. So how are you guys funding this?
So what we ended up happening, what we knew was happening was that, and I guess that probably speaks a little bit more better than I can, but there was such utilization at the clinic that the Public Hospital District had said, listen, because we contract with St. Michael Medical Center, we would like to be able to provide you with some funding to provide a second provider. And for whatever reason, I don't know what the business case was or what the answer was, but it was like, hey, we're not gonna provide that for whatever reason. So I said, well, wait a minute, if St. Michael's is not gonna bring a provider down, would you be willing to fund a mobile provider? Here's the business concept behind this, because it won't be the hospital, we wanted a three-year pilot program. Who will ultimately pay for this program? It's all sudden done, is insurance companies? Medical insurance companies and hospital providers. Medical insurance companies because, listen, if I can keep patients at home, and I keep them well and not going in the emergency room, which insurance is having to cover, that's to their benefit. Case in point, if I can get to a patient that's got a simple infection, right, simple infection, and we provide antibiotics early on and keep them out of the emergency room in the ICU, because if that progresses, we're gonna become sick, we're gonna become septic, we're gonna be near life. You do need your paramedics and EMTs at that point, and you're now in a six-to-10-day ICU stay. The bill on that is gonna be running about $180,000 for that particular stay. So if we can get upstream and solve it with a $15 medication, the program has paid for itself in healthcare dollars saved with one patient, to the benefit of the insurance company. So we're already in contact with Regents and a couple other, they need actuarial work and that's why I wanted the hospital district because bean counters at the insurance companies and they, they said, hey, great premise, show us numbers what you're doing. And that's what we're building the case for right now.
So right now, are you able to bill insurance?
We are.
Okay. Interesting.
Is that all insurances or certain?
99%, if you have, it's, we're covering 13 of the biggest insurances that are here in North Mason, which we, which correlate with what we're doing on the ambulance side. I think we've yet to run into an insurance we haven't covered, we don't, we don't cover.
Are there other districts that are doing this, like not just like Mason County here, but?
I'm working with my counterparts in South Mason, Central Mason, because again, what I would love to have happen with the hours, right? So what if you have a provider that's working noon to 8 o'clock? It can kind of work in combination with a provider here, get more coverage. So it's not stood up just yet, but I, we're trying to get county-wide coverage.
Are you gonna be working, or is kids at, are they thinking about doing this?
They're working, yeah.
Other than?
Yeah, yeah, they're working with St. Michael Medical Center right now. Because the hardest piece is the funding piece, who's gonna pay for this? And the reason why is at hospitals, because another thing that we're doing with our PA is if you are what's considered a high-risk patient, so you've just had heart surgery, you know, you've had COPD, you've got, you know, a pretty big wound that was stitched up or surgery, the hospital notifies us that you're being released. And then our PA is there either same day or next day to go through the 200 pages worth of discharge instructions that you got that you can't understand. 19 new medications that you've just been given. And you take people that get that, that don't normally access the healthcare system, they become confused, they don't follow, then understand why their wound is now infected, and guess what, that's a 911 call. So if we can get there and help them through that critical 48 to 72 hours, we're keeping them from going back into the system. That's to the benefit of the hospital, because if it's a Medicare patient, which is about 60%, 60 to 70% of the patients that go into the hospital, if they come back to the hospital within 30 days, they're penalized by Medicare to millions of dollars. So again, pennies on the dollar as far as investment from the hospital standpoint, if there's a community resource. Right now, you know, if you were to be, we've got, we've run into a couple of different cases. If you're released from the hospital to home healthcare, it's a week to get home healthcare in place. So what do you think's gonna happen during that week? Problem, complications, situations? We wanna be able to have something that can bridge that transition when you do come home.
Do you know what they're going to copay it as? Is it gonna be like an emergency room copay or is it gonna be like a?
Doctor visit, we're doctor visit. Yeah, we, yeah, not an emergency room doctor visit.
How long have they been doing it?
We started in January 1st. Fast forward to when we were truly like hitting the ground, getting all the foundation work. We hit, really started seeing patients August 1st, so we're about six months into it. We're approaching 300 patients seen. We're averaging between six and eight patients a day, so our volume is kicking up, which is great.
Awesome, we're getting out.
No, I know you're there.
You're looking at it, and that's why I'm here tonight. No, social media, flyers, cards.
That's so good.
I saw all these guys at the school doing the roadshow and whatnot. Because the difficulty that I'm having, and we're gonna overcome this, but for 100 years, longer than that, the fire service has let, don't call us unless a true emergency exists. Better be fire out the front door or somebody's dying, don't call us otherwise. And now what we're trying to do is change that narrative to, call us. What, you know, you got an infection, call us. You got a sore throat, call us. You got, you know, breathing difficulty, call us.
Very different phone number problems.
Yes, so if you get, yes, 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 if you call this number, this goes down to our scheduling.
Right.
Right, it's station 21. Even if you happen to be in the neighborhood, just stop in, if our PA's, it's Monday through Thursday, we can just schedule there as well.
It's cool that you can just schedule like that.
Did you already send these out, like these as mailers? Have they gone out?
Yeah, they did, yes. So we sent out our first batch, about 7,000, but if it didn't make it to your house, I got extras for tonight, though.
So before you started this, I'm hypoglycemic, which is why I was standing out there before I came in here, because my sugar was really low. And your guys have come out and met me at my car at home and did my blood and everything and then sat with me until I was done shaking and crying and then, and on. So this is, this is really cool. So not only are you able to put structure to this, but you were kind of already doing this with people? But now you can put money to it and funding and all of that? I mean, not that you weren't getting funding before, but.
Right.
Very cool.
Well, and on the flip side, so you're hypoglycemic, that takes hyperglycemic patients, right? Blood sugar's up and through the roof, they're running out of insulin, you know, which happens a lot, prescription doesn't get refilled. So if you call us for that, it is a medical emergency, but we don't carry, the law doesn't allow us to carry $60 worth of insulin. So that's a trip to the emergency room, so.
Oh, you don't have insulin?
We don't. And so all of a sudden, well, our PA does. Before with our paramedics, we're obligating you to about $3,000 in a five-hour hospital stay. Well, you need a $60 worth of medication. So one of the best, one of our best referrals has been our pharmacies. People come in, they're confused with what they need, I don't have a prescription, nobody's looking at me, I don't even have a doctor, what do I do? I'm in crisis. Go down to the fire station, come on back and see us when we've taken care of it. We worked that great.
But you're in good things, it's so amazing, just, you know, with the lack of what we have up here. It's great.
Yeah, you're gonna put some tears in people's eyes with that.
Well, hopefully give some smiles, so get a feeling better. That's the plan, that's the plan.
Seeing as the school district is leader in many areas in the state and so is the fire district, is it something in the water or what is it?
Well, let's go with that, John. Yeah, it must be the water. I think actually within this community, it's good people doing good things, it really is. You get, you know, we're gonna talk about that on Friday. We talk about the partnerships that we have in this small community, people knowing one another, speed dialing, getting programs like this up and off the ground, not a lot of bureaucracy around it, it's doing really good stuff.
That's great. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
I don't want to continue with the teaching learning update. Are you okay with that, Dan?
I'm fine.
All right, then we'll go ahead with teaching and learning.
All right, so I'm Carlos, I'm Director of Curriculum Instruction. And last month, we went over our academic goals. And there's a lot of different academic goals that you've heard. Since the start of the school year, about 100% goals. And I'm really excited about this one. This is our 100% of all students in North Mason School District participate in extracurricular activities. That's a tough goal to monitor, especially when you're gonna hear from Jessica Collins at the elementary school and how we are beeping up our extracurriculars at the elementary level as well. But just the kind of extracurriculars for me personally, I guess that is probably why I'm here. The extracurriculars, I participated in high school and through college, that's the reason I am still involved in education. So this one really touches me quite a bit when we start talking about extracurriculars. And I know our student reps or some of them just came from some of their extracurricular activities. So our why, when, years ago, when we went to the whole child, whole school, whole community, that's really what this is involving, is really having all of our kids be involved in the community, the whole child that we are trying to educate. There's a lot of research out there, and as I was looking through different pieces of research, it kind of varies with what it says about the impact academically. I saw everything that was a 2% gain all the way up to like a 10% gain for. I saw everything that was a 2% gain all the way up to like a 10% gain for kids that are involved in extracurriculars. What I didn't see was a negative for extracurricular activities. So that's really what we want to display here today. And so on the next slide, we went and, we already started the process of gathering data from our community. Each, every two weeks, we send out a POSIV to our families, and they have some pretty, you know, the feedback from, feedback about the school, are you having a positive experience, and then also we get that additional question. About five weeks ago, the extra question was about extracurricular activities, and these were the results we got. We had 122, yeah, that's right back, 122 total responses to this question. 67 of the families that, or the parents that responded to this, said yes, that their kid is involved in extracurriculars in the district. 55 said no. So when you look at that too, I tried to break it down aside by school as well, and a majority of the no responses came from our elementary families. In fact, one of them came from my wife, who responded no to it at, from Sand Hill. When, and for me, I, my kid's a kindergartner, there's not a lot of offerings from the school for extracurriculars for kindergartners. And how I look at this question is a little different, my kid's involved in dance, so she is doing extracurricular. It may not be a school-sponsored activity, but we're trying to, you know, when you're in elementary school, you're still trying to get them out there. And I would, I would have responded differently to that question, I would say, yeah, she is, she is involved in extracurriculars. So her and I had a discussion when I saw that, it was a no response.
You didn't want to revert it, because I, my brain immediately was like, yeah, no, we don't have any, but then I'm like, oh wait.
She even put, my kid's a kindergartner on the, on her response, and I was like, yeah, I know, but we have, she's a dance, what do we take her? So, yeah, it helped us with some of the wording too, and maybe our definition of what our extracurricular offerings throughout, throughout our community as well. So I just wanted to put up there what we currently got, and I thought even getting just 122 responses, I think is a pretty good idea of what our families are at least thinking or saying about some of our offerings. So if we go to the next slide here. So we're going to kick it off for our elementary school extracurricular activities, and Jessica Collins from Belver Elementary is going to kick us off with the presentation for our elementary schools.
Jason Crinbater, so I'm going to step in for him too. So starting off with Belver Elementary School, we, as Kyle said, we're growing our offerings and have some future things that we're going to talk about in a couple more slides for our kindergarten TK through second grade. But we are mainly focused on 3th through 5th, 4th and 5th graders. We currently offer a Bobcat board game, which happens to have 30 students that are involved in that approximately. The kids come and play board games, Anne Helmick is running that, our P teacher. We have what's called Mallet Masters, which has kind of been going on forever, are you an OG? Yeah, and our 4th and 5th graders participate in that, and there's 25 of them that are doing that currently. And then choir as well, 4th and 5th graders, about 28 students that are involved in choir. The infamous Don Cornell runs those two programs and does a great job. So we are looking to expand, is Sand Hill next?
Can I just ask a question though?
Yeah.
Jessica, if they're going to be involved in these extracurricular, they have to get to school early.
Yes, they do.
So that's probably a problem.
It is a barrier.
Yeah, because?
They have to be there probably about, it ranges an hour to 40 minutes earlier.
So it's not like they could run, they couldn't ride the first bus in, they would need parent.
And I do think that we need to start maybe thinking outside the box a little bit on that.
Well, as it is, school starts pretty late, so like for working families, the earlier is the better.
Yeah, I agree, I think, I don't know, after school might land better.
That too.
I don't know, yeah.
Does Belver Elementary still offer garden club?
Good question, that's on our future slide. Yes, we, we have in the past, and we are going to be expanding on that, we have a new science teacher. And so we've given her a year to like get her feet wet, and then that is her goal, to get, get going on that, good question. Did you love the garden club?
Yes, and I don't know, I think it was the garden club, but we got to go out to the like the wetlands and like look and do everything down there too.
Yeah, maybe Kiwanis too.
I think that might have been.
Okay, so at Sand Hill, they have an art club for grades 2 through 5, so they did dip down in grade level, which is awesome. I'm unsure who runs that at the school, but I'm jealous, we need to get it going. They have music makers, and I know that is their music teacher that runs that for grades 3 through 5. And then they offer choir for grades 4 and 5. And a lot of these are music makers, it says up here that it's an engaging club that involves hands-on learning. They explore rhythm through movement and instrument exploration and all that good stuff. So both of these are music teachers are very skilled, seasoned veterans that have a lot of things to offer and really engage kids. They will love them. I personally have a lot of kids that were involved in these two programs at Sand Hill as well when I taught there, and they're super engaging, and they love them, they look forward to them, they sing all the stuff all day long in class. It's fantastic, I do think that we need to grow it, we have some work ahead of us, I think the district's goal has pushed us.
So is that outside of the school day as well?
Yep.
Those three clubs?
Music makers is beforehand.
Oh.
Thank you, Sand Hill Dad.
I dropped my kit off this morning.
At Sand Hill Elementary, has there been a setback in how many extracurriculars were offered? Because when I attended, there was strategy game club, there was already a Kiwanis club over there, there was several others. There was Girls on the Run, there was a math club. So has there just been a setback in offerings?
You know, yes, obviously, because look at you spit them all out. So yeah, I think so, I think that there's lots of barriers that have gotten away, I think COVID maybe kind of got in there a little bit too. But, go ahead.
We used to have the Boys and Girls Club, that's right, so we could stay behind and do things.
And could interact in that. Our overall population and what our kids come with, we're talking about transportation, and parents, the ability to get them before and after school there. I think there are a lot of barriers, but I think it's something that we need to start to look at and get people back on track.
Is there still banned offer to 4th and 5th graders in the morning?
Yes, yes, they do that three times a week. Yep, for 4th, 5th graders. And so future elementary offerings, Kyle and I sat and said, okay, what do we, what do we got, what can we get going, get started again? And we do offer both buildings do Girls on the Run, and historically, that's been happening for quite a few years. Very well attended, I don't have exact numbers because it is, we have not yet hit that. But last year, there were approximately 40 kids, girls, that were at Belver Elementary, and I think probably similar if not more at Sand Hill, because they do have more than, I think they have more kids there. Kiwanis Club, at both, I would love to see Kiwanis come, Club come back to Belver Elementary too. Environmental Club, Garden Club, and some ideas that we were talking about that we thought that would go over very well with our kiddos as a Lego club. And then we had a large discussion about intramural sports, and how our community is fantastic. We have great athletic sports and offerings in our community, but not all kids can participate. Our programs also offer scholarships, which are fantastic, but they can't reach maybe the needs of all of our kids. So an idea that I know some districts do is creating an intramural type sporting, you know, spring and fall or whatever, for kids to learn basics and for soccer or basketball, something like that. So we're gonna, we're gonna work hard at that.
I need to brainstorm on those.
I think so.
I think, because I was in one of the districts that offered intramurals for 4th and 5th graders, and it was a really great opportunity for some of the kids that were not participating like in Pee Wee or Red Club or anything like that, to be able to experience like the difference of sport every couple weeks. I would say, you know, we'd want to, there's some of those barriers of transportation to be able to do this. But I think our staff would be able to be a part of this as well.
One of the things the district office has been working on behind the scenes, and we don't have a confirmed solution yet, but we have been fishing for a group to provide affordable, basically based on what families could afford before or after school care at our two elementary schools, which would then make it more impossible for kids to get there early and participate in some things. So we're still working on that. Some of the, some of the providers that some of our neighbors are doing are prohibitive because they want a certain size of district to serve, and we don't quite reach that bare minimum. But we have a couple of possibilities right now that we're still in talks with that might allow us to offer that kind of support as we enter the next school year, so, we're working on that.
Thank you, I think that was, it's a neat. Are we good?
Very cool.
Any questions?
What are, like, when you were mentioning earlier, like for TK and kindergarten, what kinds of, which of these kinds of clubs made sense for the youngers? Or what were you guys?
I think that's a good question, I think that a lot of adults fear that process of managing TK and K, you know, kindergartners, four and five-year-olds in the, in an activity that maybe is not super structured. So I think that we would have to be super thoughtful, make sure that it's manageable, safe, that we have enough, you know, adult supervision to do that. But I'd be open to ideas. I think the sports could be something too.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like five-year-olds, four-year-olds, they do ninja classes, they do 100 square gymnastics, and four, whatever, like.
And maybe it's not as long as like the time, you know, maybe it's half an hour, you know, or something. But I think that, I think it's all doable at any level, as long as we are, have a clear plan in place and have the right people to run it.
And I think another thing that will come up through this discussion, that, you know, part of, we asked our buildings to look and our district to look differently at how we set our goals and divide things up so we can talk about them this year. But all of this is leading to some, using some of the questions we're asking through POSIV and some additional surveys we started. We just got one done with staff, and we're going to follow up with a longer survey with families, and then some public meetings to engage our families in talking about strategic planning going forward for the district, but really in the context of the whole community. Because when we started several years ago, talking about whole child, whole school, whole community, we know in North Mason, it's more true than probably many places, that our community is part of the solution to preparing our kids for the future. And we have really good relationships in our community, and we want to strengthen those. So all these things that we are setting goals for ourselves to do with and for our families and our kids, we need community partnerships to be totally successful. So the kind of information my team is sharing with you tonight, the questions we're asking, and then when we get to that public meeting is, okay, this is what we know, this is what we need to do. These are places we need to identify ways that the community can partner with us to make these things happen for kids. So I think it's going to be a really powerful conversation as we go through the year and gather all this information.
So is this like, if you would say a 23, 24, like this school year project?
Yeah, I think, I don't remember it being a part of our goals for extracurricular, we're talking extracurriculars right now, in the past, so I think this is our baseline, we're trying to figure out everything we have and can offer, and try some new things, and see what kind of things and how we're going to support all kids.
Next up is Buckets Middle School, Robert Callahan, principal.
Extracurricular activities are something that's always been important to me in any of the schools that I've got a principal at. Several years ago, I had the opportunity to travel to China and visit middle schools in both Beijing and Jinan. And one of the things I noticed at every single one of the schools I visited was the extensive amount of extracurricular activities they had for kids. Every single kid was involved in extracurricular activity, every single teacher was expected to be hosting some sort of activity for students outside the day. And, and they had just the widest range of interests that kids could be part of, and it was just so inspiring. The one that's common in the middle school that starts off is our sports, and we have just the regular, you know, seasoned sports going on. The thing that is disappointing is it's a cut program. And, and so you have your varsity and junior varsity, but then there's all these other kids that maybe their kid, families didn't get them involved in other, outside of sports leagues earlier on, and didn't get the opportunity really to participate in, if they really want to. And that's kind of hard to see those kids not get to participate because they didn't have the skills. The reason they don't have the skills is because they didn't have the ability, the opportunity to get involved in other programs or sports to build it. So I don't want to belittle our sports program because it meets a lot of our kids and our community's needs for just being part of what's going on at school, and we're pretty proud of what happens. So can we go to the next one? What I do want to talk about is how we incorporated that feeling into the other clubs that we had. I have told our students repeatedly, you have an interest, let us know, find a teacher that's willing to host for it, we'll make a club out of it. I don't care if it's Pokemon and Magic Cards, we'll make that happen at the school. And this year alone, we have things like the Technology Student Association, where we got kids that were excited last year to build their robots and take it to competition. We've doubled the number of kids that are part of that this year, and now they're not just building robots, they're looking at doing other competitions at the TSA club, such as marketing and fashion design. So they're really branching out to other careers and looking at that. The robot club jumped over, they want to do Lego robotics, and that has a whole different competition that happens. And so they're preparing for going to that competition here in the next month, and we can have sixth graders participate in that one, where we can't have sixth graders in the TSA one because it's CTE-funded. And so a lot of sixth graders are really excited to do that. Last year was a big jump, people wanted to start up a Dungeons and Dragons club, and that was our biggest club last year. And they continued, a lot of those kids were seventh, sixth graders last year, second graders this year, and just wanted to keep doing that. And some of the incoming sixth graders were so excited to hear that was happening, immediately like, when's it starting, when's it starting? Weeks, first weeks of school, they kept coming to me every day, asking when that was going to start. Another one that's really popular is our Builders Club, and that one's supported by the Kiwanis Club, who come in regularly, and they do a great job in getting kids, learning about the whole idea of how do you do Robert's orders in order to run a meeting and be official. And you see the kids take pride in knowing how to operate a meeting like that. During the pandemic, when it was difficult for kids really to get together, we started an esports club, so that kids could compete with each other through an organized way. And it's becoming bigger and bigger in the state, and we've talked to a few other middle schools to see if we can start doing middle school competitions for the esports. So that's something that we're trying to develop even further. Our art club is great, big project at the school is, the windows next to teachers' doors are getting painted by the art club. So everybody kind of sees some little individuality as you go to the different classes and see what's exciting, what the teacher really likes gets painted on their windows. And one of the disappointing things in our sports is we don't have a boys soccer team, and that really is a big disappointment for a lot of our Hispanic boys. So we've started what's called a footsault club. And so footsault is basically indoor soccer in the gym, so we bought equipment for it, and they come every Wednesday morning and to play their footsault, and just having a blast with it. They're even looking at maybe trying to see if they can do competitions with other footsault clubs in the area. And then the, well, I guess, like I say, you know, some of them come and go, but it's always about trying to drive the interest of the kids that want to be there and finding a teacher that has a passion to incorporate that. One thing that's just starting up is a new one that is Advanced Reading Club, where, that just started here about a week ago. And we already had, I think, 30 kids signed up for, showed up for the first meeting of them. And, and so it's really becoming something of a big interest, again, the interest of the teacher driving it to get excitement for the kids.
So are these all outside of the school day?
They are all outside the school day. And our new Jazz Band Club that started this year is before school, but, and I think the footsault's before school, Builders Club's before school, I think the rest of them are after. I think the rest of them are after schools throughout the week.
So they all have to find their own transportation?
That is the biggest issue, the transportation piece of, of that. And so a lot of kids who can't have parents pick them up by four or five, can't participate.
So how are the advisors paid?
It depends. If it's an official ASV club, they have a stipend that they can have a certain amount over the course of the year. If it's not ASV sponsored, it's just kind of informal club, that they're not compensated for that. So it has to be something they're passionate about. But what I taught, I told my teachers is that if you have kids that are driving towards it, let's make it official so that we can get that, you know, into the next year.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna ask about that and just like, are, are the middle school students paying an ASV fee? And that's where the ASV fund is, or is this the same ASV fund, like, just separate, right? Oh, separate, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the difference between an informal club and a formal club, but?
It, it's, it's ASV funding, support. So if it's, if it's formal, the ASV can support it and it's funded through ASV and the kids have to join ASV and be part of it. If it's not, if it's informal, it's outside of that and, but it's more of it. When it's informal, it's more of trying it out to see if it's something that's gonna collect interest, it's something we want to make formal.
Is there a choir in the middle school?
There isn't, right now it hasn't been for many years. Although I did, the teacher that is doing the reading club has expressed interest to start the choir club. And so we're talking about making that come up in the next month or so.
My son has been talking about choir and I'm like, well, you better wait for high school. Also with choir, when I was in, I did some school in Nebraska, they had a seasonal choir where they would have it part-time just during the season so they could sing all the Christmas and all that. But they ended up joining, everybody joined choir after seasonal choir because they were so excited, but it was the ones that were nervous to like, go out, they would come and try it because they didn't feel like they had to sign up. So that seasonal choir was like a really cool one.
So how many do you have in the Dungeons and Dragons, you said it's, how many students do you have in the Dungeons and Dragons club?
This year's smaller than last year. We lost some of our eighth graders that were really passionate about it. Let's see, last time I went in there, there were probably twelve kids in there, so it's, it's a little bit down.
It's also something I think used in therapy outside of school. A lot of therapists do a Dungeons and Dragon breakout from their normal and all the kids come together to help them be more social.
There's actually a lot of research around role-playing games being used to help kids with trauma. And, and if you come in and see, in action, you'll see that it's, it's usually our mix of kids that are socially more challenged. And they're really exploring their roles and trying out in a safe environment for it.
So a lot of these, we get back to the, everything, sports, and all the clubs are essentially self-funded with how they're going through with the ASV and the fees they're paid in are for that particular activity, correct?
Some of them have support with grants that we've done. So for instance, the Lego Robotics Club, we got support to do the competitions and get the equipment through a grant. TSA is supported through the CTE program. And the other clubs have some support through the ASV. And the, the other ones that I'm kind of passionate about and try to help them get started, such as the footsaw club and, and others that I've used billing budget to support the after-school clubs in order to get them going, get things that they need to get kids excited about it.
Is there still an orchestra class?
There is orchestras, a class. We have probably twenty-five to thirty students in that class. And that's all grade levels six, seven, and eight.
With the sports, do you, would you mind, like, she has this slide up now, like, breaking down girls versus boys? Or is it the ones that say, girls are girls, boys are boys, and then track it? Like, the ones that are not, is it both genders like that?
So, yeah, well, I mean, for like fall, track and field are both. Baseball's boys, fast pitch, girls.
I see, okay.
And then wrestling is both. Cross country is both, football can be both. I don't know about volleyball, I'm told it's only girls, but.
I see, okay.
Has there any been, any thought been given to the possibility of a fashion show for the school board?
For the school what?
For the school board.
Well, once they start putting together their presentations, I'd be happy to have them come and give a presentation of what they're putting together.
Well, it'd be interesting. I mean, we have a great space for a forger, they could come in and.
Well, from what I saw of the TSA competitions, I would be surprised if it's that straightforward.
Do, um, is there any other questions, discussion, anybody?
How do you perceive these clubs getting to high school? If these students are very active, is it to them to try and implement them in the high school?
That, that is the hope. I know with the TSA that we actually are having high school students come back to the middle school to participate in our TSA club so they can go to the competition. And I know the high school was able to put together their pride club after we were able to get that going at our school. And sometimes some of the kids are really passionate at ours when they go to the high school, take that passion there to put together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up is the high school team.
So I'm gonna quickly turn this over to Ray Bonnell. He's our Dean of Students, Athletic Director oversees athletics and clubs activities. And he's gonna walk you through our slide and then Stephen, I'll hand out a few souvenirs.
All right, so like you can see on the slide there, right now we got seven hundred and thirty-nine students. I mean, some are doing more than one, participating in activities and athletics officially. And official, these are official clubs, these aren't the unofficial clubs, which also do exist in which a teacher is pretty just passionate about something, has some kids staying out after school and works with them. Activities is our big, our big piece right now. And we're actually, I was, I'm not gonna say I was disappointed in the number, but I hoped that we would be a little bit higher at this point in the year with activities that grow as the year goes along. So by the end of the year, this number will be in the six hundreds easily. We got seventeen clubs, Skills USA is one of those clubs. It's like almost a co-curricular club with a woodshop in which they build things and do stuff. That one's only at fifty right now, that one will be up into the two hundreds by the time they're done with it because they'll incorporate some of their, it turns into a co-curricular really quickly. Marching band is huge, that's a co-curricular, extracurricular kind of a thing. There are some kids that are not in band that are in marching band and vice versa. Drama's taking off right now. DECA's huge. Hua, Hua does an amazing job of getting everybody into DECA and then goes and takes financially too many kids to Nationals. That turns into a fun game every spring. All, every group so far is experienced, they're growing and all of them reported that they're anticipating to double in size roughly, except for DECA, DECA's not gonna double in size. But everybody else said that they think that they'll be doubling in size this upcoming semester as, or trimester as they get exposed. When it comes to athletics, we got three distinct seasons of athletics. Fall athletics, we saw a massive growth in involvement, one hundred and ninety-two kids involved in athletics just in the fall. Football actually doubled in size from thirty-eight to seventy-four kids involved in the program. And our GPA continues to grow, we're kind of recovering that coming out of COVID. I was hoping we'd hit three point oh, but it was a two point nine four, which is just, I couldn't even round it up. So that was, that was a bummer, but it's actually on the exact growth plan we had hoped to when it came to our growth. A few years back, it was very low. Girls soccer anticipates a C team next fall, that's a huge deal, especially in our area. Just with the lack of club, we don't have a lot of club options in the nearby. So for us to have a C team at the high school level for girls soccer is pretty phenomenal. There's a lot of these girls who just come from rec, you know, playing with KYSC or whatever. So that's pretty exciting. And then our boys tennis team's back. We graduated everybody two years ago. Last year, we could not get a kid to come out for the life of us. And this year, we got up to seven, two which didn't get academically eligible, but they're working on it. But the, the three kids that we sent to the league tournament, you get placed based on where you place in the league as a team, that's how many people you can send to the league tournament. And because of that, we got places the sixteen seed in both, so we won up against the ones that North Kids had. And we competed. Six-four, six-three was the, the final in the first round for our doubles. So we competed with the ones with our two, with our doubles team that had never played before this year. So we got a lot of really big growth in fall athletics. Winter athletics are taking off right now and they're exploding. I mean, and there's no other way of, of saying it. Boys wrestling's fifty percent larger than it was last year. Girls wrestling got so big, we actually hired a coach. And right now they are, one kid is that kid commits away from hiring an assistant coach because we'll have eighteen girls. To put that in perspective, size-wise, I think Tohoma and one other school in the state of Washington might have a larger girls team. In our league, the biggest, the second biggest girls wrestling program is Port Angeles, they've got nine girls, just to put that in perspective. And Port Angeles is twice the size of our school. So really excited about the, the energy and everything that's going into that. Girls bowling continues to be the biggest team in the state and it's not even close. It creates a lot of transportation issues for me, but we'll tackle them and we'll get after them. Boys basketball has expanded, we're hiring a C team coach here next week because they've got enough. And girls doubled from just a varsity team to a varsity and a JV this year. So we're doing a lot of good things now as far as growth for winter, I'm really excited about that. And then we just hired two new cheer coaches and they had their first practice this morning. And if Maddie and Sammy have anything to say, they're the first two that I talked to about. They're absolutely in love with the direction the program's going in. So that's where winter athletics is at right now, spring, I've looked at some, some forecasted numbers, we'll see where we're at when we get there. Any questions?
Do you have, are there other schools that have C teams that we can compete with?
In boys basketball, yes, in boys basketball. When it comes to girls soccer, we're gonna have to get creative. So, and that's fine, we'll get creative. We'll send some girl, like, Clougha has a C team, because that's a big soccer school. So we'll send our girls to play against Clougha two, three times. I think North Kids have as a C team, Agers has a C team, so there's a couple that we can get in the nearby. And then maybe we send them across the bridge somewhere for a game or two. The nice thing about C team is because you've got varsity who's gonna have their twenty, sixteen games, whatever they're gonna play. JV's usually gonna play twelve to sixteen, like, fewer games. And then the C team, we get ten games for those kids, it's ten games that we want to have. So it's all win-win-win when it comes to a C team program and pretty excited about that.
What do you attribute to, like, the popularity of girls wrestling in this areas of the coast? They're really garnering that interest, is it just like a good?
I think there's a, there's a couple of things that are conditions, all permission, sorry, it's a German mission. There's a couple of things that are mixing together and combining and, and we're in the right place at the right time. Nationally, girls wrestling is taking off. So, and then across the state, wrestling is taking off for girls and boys, but for girls in particular. You go back ten years, wrestling's a co-ed sport. Well, actually, wrestling was like football, it's a boys sport which some girls participated. Not too many years ago, I, I can't put a pin on which year it was, the Olympic League, the, our, our league is, wrestling is co-ed when you can make it, we split them off when we can, or else we mix in the girls when we can. But then they created a tournament at the district level for girls and at the state level for girls, and then the district. Now we've got a tournament for the, at the, at the, at the sub-district level. So now we've got that, that sub-regional tournament. Well, with that, that garners more interest because the girls don't have to wrestle against the boys. Right? And so, and as they start, well, I don't have to wrestle with the boys, sure, I'll give it a try. Like, and also you start seeing kids that never would even consider wrestling, consider it. And so that's grown a lot. It also helps, we had a lot of really good word of mouth going on right now. Our, our female athlete community, when you get into like the title line numbers and stuff like that, I've been actually having to lift up the boys to compete with the girls' involvement in sports. For whatever reason, the girls are taking that social piece and, and the boys aren't taking it as, as quickly. Now it's coming back right now, as you see as football starts to kick, kick back into being a bigger program. Boys basketball starts to grow and become a bigger program. And that has a lot to do with just recruiting kids, getting kids to be excited to play with each other. But yeah, so as the, as the national and everybody starts to grow, we happen to be in a place where our kids are really excited about working and playing together. And then you add to it the, the lady that we hired as our wrestling coach, Erin Evans, she coached them as kids, a lot of the kids. And she, she's just really, she's, she's somebody you want to be around, she's exciting. And it doesn't hurt that her daughter is also, she was a national champion this summer and it's a pretty big deal. So we're looking at even getting, having a state champion this year in wrestling. She missed out last year because she had a dislocated rib. So it's pretty exciting and it's exciting to be around that when you can. With the Ed Amick Center over here, we've actually expanded now wrestling to the point where the Ed Amick Center can't hold everybody. So we've actually added mats to the community, to the gym, gym floor. And PV basketball, I met with them today about how we're gonna kind of piece them around so that they can still have access to gym floors, so we're not rolling up the mats every day. That's about four thousand dollars just in tape we shouldn't be spending. So it's exciting to come up with those problems and get creative on how to solution, find solutions there.
You had mentioned transportation issues. I know for bowling there and football, because I talked to Rob, that there is self-transportation, that girls can take other teammates or football can take other teammates, but they do not get compensated for the gas mileage that they have to provide. Is there any way to combat that, is there?
So when it comes to practice, that, that's, that's what we're talking about. Football doesn't self-transport anyone for anything. They shouldn't be, if they are, let me know. That's, that's a, no, they don't need to transport down to the field. But when it comes to practice, one of the, one of the offsets and one of the difficulties with bowling and golf, the nice thing about golf is we have a bus that goes on the golf course. Right? So they can just organize and put them on the school bus.
Where does bowling, where are we going?
Port Orchard, Hy- Hy-Joy. Hy-Joy in Port Orchard. So when we have a, a bowling program that's got seven girls, it's not a problem. Everybody pop, piles in a van and we go. Last year, when we expanded to forty-two girls, I think is where we were at at one point. Where we get the vans, we gotta get van drivers, we don't have vans that are necessarily available. We don't have a bus that, bus driver that's free to drive up, you know, four times a week or whatever. Now, the nice thing about bowling is when we have competitions, all the competitions are pretty much Silverdale, Port Orchard. We have two in, in Port Angeles. Those ones, we'll just take this up, the, the varsity girls and send them up there. The less competitive bowlers, the ones that are more recreational, the JV kids that are out there to have this good time, hang out with their friends, they're not necessarily trying to go to state, they're just trying to get better at bowling and hang out with their friends. Those kids, we don't, they don't necessarily want to go on a two-hour trip just to go bowl however many frames and come home. So that way, we're still good as far as that. And the beautiful thing about bowling is they start playing, like, like, their, their fifth practice, they start playing. So there's not a lot of practices, they go right into competition.
We had one practice before our fifth game.
Exactly. And there's no minimums at the state level, so we can just throw them in, hey, go figure it out as you go, and that's pretty cool. All of the games are transported. We send them on a bus, we get them enough fans in the second century. Practices is where it gets difficult with the forty-two.
And there are rules about self-transport?
Yes, you have, students shouldn't be dragging other students.
Students should never, but parents of students with paperwork. That's, well, we can talk about that later, we'll get into that one, because I'm very curious to find out more.
I feel like concessions at bowling, best concessions by far, when you go to a bowling match, they have really good.
But to clarify though, just kind of lost my train of thought, but, so they do have to carpool? There is no transportation to practice?
We have one van, we take the big van. So we got two coaches right now, one's dr, actually Melanie's been able to drive sometimes. So sometimes we have two vans and we get almost everybody there. The girls that can't transport themselves, or the girls that have to transport themselves because they're at OC, they're just coming back from, or from West Sound Tech or things like that, they, they meet at the place, they still transport themselves.
And we do not reimburse people for mileage, okay, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Transportation has a shortage of drivers, we have buses, but enough, enough people to drive them to add to the workload right now. However, we do have a number of new drivers in the pipeline. And hopefully they will finish successfully their training and pass their tests before we get too much deeper into the bowling season.
Yeah, and the, the really nice thing about bowling, as far as transportation is concerned, is we can do what's called a drop-in rally, we can get real creative with transportation. For a soccer game, if we could, if we don't have a bus driver available. Um, for a soccer game, if we could, if we don't have a bus driver available. The, the, the last option is what's called a drop and release, which we take the team up on a bus, but we take them up. Early enough that the bus driver can come back and then do their route. Which is horrible, because we're warm out of the classroom and then they're up there and we have to supervise them while they sit in the stadium and wait until their game. Starts to warm up for it, and that's the absolute last thing that we wanna do. Bowling matches start at two forty-five in the afternoon. So when we drop and release for them, it's actually just a normal drop and release. We come back, we pick them up right when the game's over, so it doesn't impact. Basketball transportation or ball, or wrestling transportation, so that's been. It's been, it's been really, actually. If you like puzzles, working with transportation department, we've had an amazing time taking, tackling some really crazy puzzles as far as transportation and with some of the limitations we have. But.
Okay. Wanna wrap up our presentation, um, Steve's gonna connect to the clubs and activities. I wanna remind you, we started this last year, I think I shared these with you, call them dog tags. Hand them out to students, staff, community members that go above and beyond, um. We continued this, this year.
Is it a sticker?
Yes, we're seeing these on water bottles, cars, laptops. Then last year, we started, this was our first alumni dog tag. So every kid when they got their diploma, when they came and picked up their diploma, the day after graduation, they got a alumni dog tag.
Thank you.
You guys haven't given one yet. So then this year, we took it a step further with, and Steve's gonna explain those.
Yeah, we have two of them, with our hundred percent goal that the district has, so we made some of these, they haven't given these out yet. They have one hundred percent on the bulldog, so if you're involved in any type of club or sport, then you get one of these type, you guys.
Almost everything that I have to offer, I do.
Hundred percent is on there, kinda like a little tattoo for the bulldog. And then we started, kind of our slogan for the year is Rise Above. Anyone that's been around the town, like most of us have been for a while, we've all heard the saying, which, you know, should drive you nuts, is. Oh, it's just belfair, that's a belfair thing. That, like, makes me wanna just say things I haven't ever said, so. We kinda started this Rise Above, and so just pointing, aiming people to go higher, we're not, don't say it's just belfair. We can do anything out here, stop it, say you're darn right it's belfair. So we also made some that are just some Rise Above stickers.
Oh, more stickers.
Your water bottles are gonna be full.
There are, I love that you have the alumni one.
Hey, we passed the bond.
I love it.
Thank you.
It is so good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put that on your work.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, good evening, board, I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations here in North Mason. I'm very proud to be here in North Mason School District. At every board meeting, when individuals share, group share, and building share, I just get really, really excited. In my work in finance, I always wanna keep in perspective how we use our resources to support. Great programs or great, great activities for our students. And so it just really, to me, it energizes me to hear presentations like we've heard tonight. I also am a little bit energized because today we finished our year-end financial report. It was a very big process. It took two and a half months to complete. It was a team effort with the entire business office, I'm putting in a lot of effort. And using their, our collective wisdom to complete this task. So in our next meeting, I'll be doing a year-end presentation at the December board meeting. Tonight, I'm presenting our budget status through the month of October. So we're gonna begin with the other fund status reports. So beginning with our capital projects fund. The month-end fund balance in capital projects was two hundred five thousand thirty-six dollars. That's a ninety-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollar decrease since September. And we have had some projects that we've been working on using those funds in our maintenance and facilities department. Uh, in debt service, our month-end balance was two million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. That's an eight hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollar increase since September. And that's due to, um, property taxes received in the month of October. We are going to see a decrease in that the next time I give a budget status because. Uh, we do have a bond payment due at the end of November here. In ASB, our budget, uh, our fund balance at the end of October was four hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred seventy dollars. That's a sixteen thousand five hundred thirty-four dollar increase. And in our transportation vehicle fund, we ended with three hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars, an increase of one thousand four hundred twenty. Uh, we're gonna look at our enrollment now, so. Um, what we have here is our enrollment as of our November, uh, beginning of November count. And you can see our budgeted enrollment, K-12, uh, was two thou, uh, is, is. Uh, two thousand three hundred twenty-two students. Our November count for FTE was two thousand two hundred seventy-six point eighty-eight. As you can see on the bottom there, I summarized it and made it a little larger to see. Um, the difference is forty-five students. Um, so we're a little under budget and, uh, what we budgeted for enrollment. Um, with our TTK program, um, in November, we had thirty-two students in our FTE and TTK, which is four students above what we budgeted.
But I think it's important to point out that original budgeted enrollment number was inclusive of TK.
Yes.
So it's really not that much lower than the budget.
Correct.
I think you mentioned this before, that we were expecting it to kinda do that, so.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the general fund status report. Okay, so we're gonna start with revenues. So on the top left there, you can see our total revenues actual year-to-date. We were at seventeen point zero-two percent, and we had projected that we'd be at, um, seventeen point eight-seven percent. So really close there. For local revenues, we, uh, had received thirty point five-two percent. And we projected we'd be at thirty-one point two-nine. State sources, sixteen point thirty-eight, and we projected we'd be at sixteen point eighty-eight. And for federal, we were at nine point eight-five, and we projected we'd be at thirteen point four-nine, so. Our top ten sources of revenue include our apportionment. Um, so to date, uh, through October, we had collected four million one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars in apportionment. Uh, local property tax, we have collected one million one hundred ninety-two thousand two forty-three. I'm skipping some of these, but I wanna point out a few. Impact aid, uh, forty-seven thousand eight hundred two dollars, and for investment earnings, thirty thousand two hundred forty-six. Now let's go on to the next slide, please. So this shows our total revenues budgeted, um, and then compares that to our projected year-to-date with our current year-to-date. So on the left, that tall, uh, blue, uh, graph shows that, uh, for the year, we had, uh, budgeted forty-two million three hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred eighty-seven in revenues. Our projected year-to-date general fund revenues were seven million five hundred seventy-five thousand six seventy. And our current actual revenues through October were seven million two hundred fourteen thousand nine thirty-nine. Now let's go to the next slide, please. This one here, just as a visual, we can see our revenues by source, local, state, and federal. Are projected versus our current. So you can see our local revenues are close to what we have projected. State, just a little lower, and federal is just a little lower than we had projected year-to-date. And then the next slide shows, uh, trend over four years. Uh, revenues by source. Uh, so this goes back to, in yellow, that's, uh, school year twenty twenty-one. And, uh, on the, on the right, I believe that's purple, is this current year. So you can see our, um, local, state, and federal revenues year-to-date across the years as a comparison. And let's go on to the next slide. This, uh, is our, our expenditures through October. So the top left there is a really important one, that's our projected year-end balance as a percent of our budgeted expenditures. So we are at eight point nine-two percent through October. And our, uh, fund balance policy requires us to be between eight percent and ten percent. So we're right in the middle there. Total expenditures actual year-to-date, uh, sixteen point five-two percent. And we projected we'd be at sixteen point nine-three. Salaries and benefits, actual fifteen point five, and we projected we'd be at sixteen point zero-seven. And basic, uh, sixteen point two-three, we projected we'd be at eighteen point zero-seven. So all of those are well within, um, what we had projected, are close. Our top ten expenditures through October include basic education at three million three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred seven. District-wide support at one million fifty-eight thousand four twenty-two. Special education through state, seven forty-eight, five thirty-seven. And, uh, ALE, Alternative Learning Experience, at four hundred forty-five thousand six sixty-seven. Transportation at three hundred forty-two thousand five sixty-three. And I'll end with school food services at two hundred seventy thousand seven sixty-four. Let's go to the next slide, please. Total expenditures budgeted versus projected. So we had budgeted, um, forty-two million four hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred eighty-three for annual, for a year in expenditures. Our projected year-to-date expenditures through October were seven million two hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred two. And our current actual expenditures through October were seven million eighty-six thousand six fifty-one. And the next slide, please. This one shows our expenditures by object, our projected year-to-date versus current. Again, as a visual, just to compare, to see, you know, what we projected versus where we currently are. And you can see in these objects, salaries for certificated, classified, our benefits. Um, our current was just under what we projected. Our supplies, um, significantly less, our purchase services more. Uh, expend, uh, next slide, please. This is expenditures by object prior year date versus current. Again, a four-year trend, this is in our expenditures. And you can see that, um, difference across the years in salaries for certificated and classified benefits. Where we see that increase each year. Supplies and purchase services vary. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this one here is our month-end balances, um, current, our prior from Oc, uh, from August through October. Um, those are actual numbers. November through August to the right, those are projected numbers. So you can see, um, in the month of October, and Jack, if you could please scroll down a little, I summarize it in the table. Um, so October thirty-first, month-end fund balance was four million seven hundred thousand ninety-one dollars. Our budgeted year-end fund balance is three million seven hundred eighty-three thousand eight seventy-three. And that's what we budgeted, and based on the current trend through August, September, October. It's showing that our projected year-end balance will be three million eight hundred twenty-five thousand six thirty-four. So just a little over what we budgeted. And this is the last slide, this is our, a summary, it shows last fiscal year on the left. For current year, on the right side. You can see our total revenues, current year-to-date are seven million two hundred fourteen thousand nine thirty-nine. Compared to our budget, which is forty-two million three ninety-five. And you can see that so far, we have received seventeen point two percent of our, uh, revenues for the year. And down below, you have our expenditures, you can see the current, our seven million eighty-six thousand six fifty-one. Compared to what we budgeted for the year, that forty-two million four ninety-five. So we have spent sixteen point six-eight percent of what we planned to spend for the year. And then you can compare, how does this year compare to last year by looking at those percentages in the left table? Last year revenues at this point in time through October was fifteen point eight-nine percent, and expenditures were fifteen point nine-six. Down at the very bottom, it has our ending fund balance again. Now, I quoted you four million seven hundred thousand on the last slide. Well, that's because it's showing four million six thirty-eight ninety-eight. However, we did make some year-end adjustments that, uh, didn't show up when I ran the report. So I just added those down at the bottom, because through the year-on-process, we accrued some funds back to twenty-two, twenty-three. Some grant monies we had received and things like that. So I added those on there, and that's where that four million seven hundred thousand ninety-one dollars comes from. So with that, I conclude my status report.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or discussion?
Good job, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dan. Fantastic. Back on to our agenda, we are at upcoming more of our columnists to finish out the year. Um, we have John this month and Leanna next month.
I will do the report, it's Jan.
Sounds good. Um, assurance of organizational performance and policy review, we're at the portion of our evening where we take a look at our monitoring reports. We have one this evening, ER-10 academic standards and practices. Um, a monitoring report has been prepared for us by our superintendent. And we've had a chance to take a look at that ahead of time. Um, the administration recommends that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER-10. It would entertain a motion, um, recommending that.
Advance a motion to find the superintendent in compliance with ER-10.
Any discussion?
It was a very thorough report.
Very clear.
I, I felt like I knew more than I'd ever known before, and I've been here for a long time. So thank you very much for that. My question is, do you use student input, um, as you are considering academic achievement? Okay, I need to make sure. Adoptions? Adoptions, yes.
Um, we are growing in that area. In the past, that has not been, um, a requirement.
No.
Nor, and it has been focused more on ensuring that we have input from families and community members. But I know that as Kyle prepares the, the upcoming adoption and the work that, now this one is not high school level, this is K-8. As they prepare that work, they are looking for ways to get more input from students. I'm using some of our survey tools or, or other information towards that adoption. But, but really, this, this year's adoption is K-8 math. Um, we have to break math because it's the most expensive one into doing over a multiple years. And so, um, they are just starting that work, and one of the things that they will be doing will be soliciting members of that committee. And although that is a committee that is selecting materials for, prior to high school. Um, that is one of the things that Kyle and his team want to explore and look at.
Okay.
Perhaps having some high school students who might have some input on what we're doing be a part of that committee work.
Okay, I was just.
It happens after school, so it conflicts with some of the other activities, but yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, um, element to ensure that district works with staff, parents, students, and appropriate elements of the community. And I, and I, obviously, we do get input from our students when, are you still doing the student form?
We're gonna do those in a different format this year, uh, with specific questions from the board, with the students.
Okay.
To make us about, rather than quite as open-ended, so that, so that we really can focus. focus on some of these questions.
Yes.
Instead of, um, conversations that we're encouraging student leaders and student, um, body members to have with their administration about building specific concerns.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I think it's a great report. I've, I had a conversation with a constituent over the last several weeks, boy, if I'd had that, I would have settled a number of things quicker.
That sounds interesting. All right, I also agree, I think it was very thorough, and I appreciated the, just, um, at the end there, the, the list of just all the different, the research base that you used. Thank you.
Yeah, and that really reflects the work that the district has done over a number of years, research that we involved our staff in, and our staff has involved going, you know, two-way communication about, these are the things that contribute to effective teaching and learning, and how to develop programs.
All right, um, we have a motion on the floor, we've had our discussion. I will take the vote, uh, student advisory vote, signify by sign, saying, you know, A, yay, A, I do agree with, um, the motion. Okay, and board member?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all in favor, and here in opposed, motion carries. Okay, back to the agenda, which I think we are at, our policy review. Um, was there, this is an opportunity to discuss, um, policies that we reviewed last one, uh, which we had ER-13 mandatory policies, is there any discussion surrounding that?
I have nothing.
Great, we're adjournment and good of the order. I'm gonna start with Deanna down here.
Well, you know, uh, one of the things I've been trying to do is have, uh, times to spend with kids specifically, when it's not dealing with a concern or, or something in the leagues, and so I've scheduled times to visit different teachers' classrooms and either substitute teach or be an extra pair of hands in the classroom throughout the year, and it has been a really powerful and enjoyable experience. I've learned from each classroom I've been in. Last week, I got to be part of, um, Katrina Moore's seventh-grade science class, and, um, I subbed for her during that period, and learned a lot from the kids and from their participation in our Project Lead the Way curriculum. It was really, really powerful and interesting, and they were very focused and had, um, really good commitment to learning in the class, and so it was fun, it was very hands-on session, so, um, although I was subbing as the teacher, I really got to visit around the classroom and help kids dig deeper, asking questions to help them answer their own questions, it was really powerful and exciting, and, um, I've had the opportunity to do a high school science class, to do, um, math at the middle level, some elementary school classes, so it's, it's been very, very interesting, and I've also gotten to share some of my favorite picture books when I've been with some of those younger groups, and, um, I'm looking forward to this year, this month is Indigenous Peoples History Month, and when I visited my son in Alaska, I got a really awesome new picture book that is, uh, an authentic, um, retelling of the Haida story and Haida origin story with illustrations by a tribal member, and I can't wait to take it to class and share with elders.
Oh, right.
So it's very exciting.
I just want to mention that I read the email that Robert, um, the middle school principal forwarded to us regarding the music boosters, and how much they have contributed to our music program district-wide, the total, I think, is twenty-six thousand dollars, and they developed their budget based on what the music teachers' wish list looks like, and I'm, I'm just really thrilled that we have these, this group that is working so hard to support the music program, just to cry, and I think it's really commendable. And I will send him and myself your children.
I just wanted to comment on the extracurricular presentation we had tonight, and it's just great to see the highlights of that program specifically. I know, I've been involved in one of the RAC organization, one or two of the RAC organizations, and just to see the kids grow from that point, and being involved in all those things and seeing them develop, it just really makes great, a great future community members, um, with being involved in those extracurricular activities. It's just amazing to see, that was just a great presentation, followed by the staff there, so.
I really, I really love that focus, um, for the strategic planning, the hundred percent extracurriculars, I think, is really awesome.
I don't have much, I think in the last month, I got to see the Belfair Elementary Halloween Parade, um, that was so dang cute, um, I really enjoyed that, because the TK classes, um, participated and walked across the street for that, so that was just really fun to see that energy and to be around all the, all those kids, and I don't really have anything else.
Yeah, I have neither. Conferences, I like how the middle school does conferences opposed to the come-and-sit-down with teachers and care about your kid, and, you know, like, ah, and then your kid's all shy, and then you go home and talk about it and all that, but you get to walk around and just pop in and, um, kind of tour the school, um, and I love that. I'm listening to other districts, because of, uh, trying to pass a bond over an SK, and hearing a lot of the problems that they've had and everything, and I just, I love how far we've come here as a district, um, and seeing people kind of going through some of the same issues or continuing the same issues that, um, I feel that North Mason, um, jumps on their issues and like overcomes, and I see that they're coming up through these things, and it's like, come on, say North Mason, you know, like, I'm not trying to like jump into their business, you know, but I really think that North Mason has become a leader in that, um, of those, you know, hitting our specific issue set on, um, in an awesome way, so. And watching, you know, just everything that has happened here today, kind of that's enough.
Well, I have, uh, just, uh, I have three items, I mean, I wanted to get my snack into, I thought that we've had a run of absolutely splendid presentations, and my dealing with a constituent a while back, because I just recommended he watch the tape, you know, from the last three meetings, if there was any question at all, you know, about what we were doing, about the areas in which we were challenged. And that was very, those presentations were very helpful, I'm glad that we have them recorded, recorded, because I think that they're a great instrument of public information, if you can get people to, you know, to watch them. I, uh, had a, I got most of my board member obituary done. But I'm, I did interview Kyle, what's his name that deals with the, um, early education?
Kyle Ellis.
Kyle Ellis?
Yeah, uh, and he's gonna send me, he's been, it was very interesting, I'm really very big on that, uh, because of Doug, Doug, Doug Taylor III, I haven't got to mention, but I really think that's really important, that we catch kids early and prepare them to learn. There's just so many, uh, examples when I've tried to coach, things about the Constitution here, that people weren't ready to learn, you know, they just weren't ready to learn. And, uh, it's good to see this kind of preparation up, I mean, I can take that all the way to the university level. You know, last time I saw it at the University of Washington, I had put a one-fifth tax on an upper-division class, I had to teach people how to write their essays. I'm sure that's changed now, but that is where, you know, hey, what's going on in high school and other English-level, uh, things that people haven't got the basic skills? And I'm teaching high schools for, you know, one, one-fifth of my time in that particular class. I was proud to do that, thought I was rather good at it, but, um, um, the other thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned, I just bought a new book, it was on, um, it was a view of it done on the NewsHour, and it's called Poverty by America, and I forget the author's name, I had it just a second ago. But one of the things that Dana has been telling me, and, uh, David Peterson told me the same thing, you wanna change kids' grades, get them out of poverty, and, uh, it's not a question of resources, it's a question of public will. And this guy's book is certainly, I thought it was a rather full-throated defense of capitalism, but capitalism in which people pay their fair share of taxes, and if we had a system that was equitable, we could raise the money to raise public education very quickly, because a lot of the habits, the attitudes that trail people through life, through life, are formed when they're young, and if they're in poverty and your whole attention span is focused on survival, your capacity to learn other things is distinctly limited. So Donaldson was the name of the book, and it's Poverty by America, I greatly recommend it as a supplement to many of the things that we're doing here, and I think it underwrites many of the things we've heard in our reports about the importance of getting kids early, get them prepared, get them enthused, get them oriented, because it pays big dividends later down the road.
Thank you, John.
I do hope that Kyle will send me his Cracker Jack, uh, he had some visuals for me, and I don't think I'm as limited in space as I used to be with this particular one, so it might be just a little longer, it'll still be quasi Ronald Reagan one page, maybe you'll have to put the type down a little smaller, seems basic, but it's about right length.
We did have our student board member comments, but Emily, you were gone at the beginning, so if you wanna jump in with anything?
I was able to talk to one of my AP teachers today, and they said that, um, they will be able to do two AP history classes next year.
Oh.
And that is AP US history and AP world again, because they were able to offer world last year, but because they cycle through them, it's year-to-year. And luckily, um, because I was able to take an advanced class, um, as a sophomore, when they're junior some, junior, senior levels, um, I'll be able to participate in US history in on credit instead of just electing, because I happen to take in my US history class, so...
All right.
And it's definitely good news to hear more AP classes being more, uh, history classes.
Very cool.
Thank you.
All right, um, nothing else?
Oh, I just have this one thing, do you wanna take a look at...
Oh, why?
Look at that. Yes, I will be carrying this everywhere.
Yeah.
As I go, and flashing it in front of everybody, so that...
You'll have to stop in and get replacements for after when we wash that one every time. I know.
Oh.
I, I do have a couple of things I wanna point out, one is a disappointment, and one is something I'm excited about, and so I, I do want to, um, and I have made a communication, I am disappointed in the, uh, the flyer about the Giving Tree that has been published this year, forgot to mention that North Mason School District is a powerful partner in the Giving Tree on the list of organizations that support this activity, between the work that our students do on the day, to the work that our staff does, we had two staff members give up their time on the, this last, um, holiday weekend, this past weekend, to register families, and we have actually, for the Giving Tree at this point in North Mason in our community, a record number, over five hundred families registered to receive support, and largely due to the work of those staff members, so I have let folks know that I'm kind of disappointed that they didn't include us on the people that support this really important activity, um, but reminding people that that is coming up, so please, if you have the ability to, or opportunity to help sponsor a family or even part of what those requests are, it really makes a huge difference during the holiday season in our community. And then I do just wanna point out that we have some great new people potentially, one for sure, and other potentials coming on the board, um, but that means we're losing some people who have given so greatly to the community and our school district so, for so long, and so I wanted to remind everybody that Laura and John will be joining us for a goodbye at, at the December meeting, and for their last official moments as members of the school board, and we appreciate so much the work they have done and, and given to the community over time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are at board self-assessment, I'll run through this. Our general meeting behavior, and I apologize, I am, our whole family is getting over some things, so talking is like aggravating my cough, but the agenda was well-planned and focused on the work of the board, we followed our agenda, we, board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting, our meeting proceeded without interruptions or distractions, we deliberated and made decisions in public, participation was balanced, we listened attentive, attentively and avoided inside conversations, our work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness, and meeting participants treated each other with respect, and we're gonna say I'm marking all of those as satisfactory. Um, we did follow our governance principles, our board actions occurred at the policy level, we reviewed policy about each topic before we discussed the issue. We did not write any new policies this go-around, but we did minimize time spent monitoring past performance, um, we routinely dedicate time to reviewing our own processes. The board clarifies priorities and values when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries and costs of outcomes, we follow an annual calendar, the chair helps the board effec- efficiently conduct its meeting, we spend most of our time delivering issues as opposed to fixing things, and we support the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of our policies, so, um, and marking those all a yes with an overall satisfactory. We do have one last piece of action to take, um, as we discussed last month, moving, um, the date of our school board meetings to the second Thursday as opposed to the third Thursday as it is now, um, to accommodate the schedule of an incoming board member. And so I would entertain a motion, um, to approve this schedule change.
Make a motion to approve changing to the second Thursday of the month?
Any discussion?
Maybe it was, we were, I had mentioned that Emily said...
Right, because, um, Dietrich can't come on Tuesdays.
Oh, right, right.
Like today.
Yeah.
Any, does that work with you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Emily will miss that next meeting.
Oh, yes.
Um, I think because that's not accurate anymore now, right?
Oh, or it is.
That's the fourth...
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
We leave, we leave that day, I just want...
No worries, it's the holidays.
Get it. Um, okay, there's a motion on the table, I will take the student board member advisory vote. Wonderful, and board member vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I adjourn the meeting at eight nineteen.